Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for those who have passed away in our community, especially for the three young individuals from the Abingtons, Michael Commerford, Christians Schimmelfennig and Tucker Schimmelfennig, who were killed on the Scookkill Expressway just the other day. Thank you.
Mr. Smearle?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. King?
Here.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table file of the Council Number 53, 2023.
Second?
So motion on the floor and second to take from the table file Council Number 53, 2023, this ordinance establishes an environmental advisory council for the city that had been tabled until additional requested information was provided, is being taken from the table and placed in sixth order. On the question?
On the question, I'd like to keep this on the table, or off the table, I mean. Council still, I feel, hasn't had a chance to discuss more fully as a group as to how to move forward with this.
On the question too, I mean, of course, it was in the guide for me to bring it off the table, but, but as you just stated, the reason we're doing that is because we asked for information and we got it. I just don't remember getting it. I don't remember getting anything from administration. This was just, this was...
On the question, I believe that we had detailed answers that were provided to all of us.
Yes, we had a, we had a presentation from the administration.
No, but there were, there were answers to the questions that were asked.
Mr. King, all of those questions were mine.
Those were the question?
All of these questions, yeah. I went to the administration with all of these questions.
And they were answered, correct?
Yes, yes.
And they included the questions that Mr. Schuster had asked, correct?
A few that he had asked the first evening about the five members instead of three.
I just, from my perspective, I wish the council would have a discussion amongst itself as to how we are going to move forward since we are the body that has the power to create a new board.
On the question, I feel like we've had ample time to discuss this. I don't really understand what the holdup needs to be, other than what we'd already discussed was the change in the number of members on this council. And I would, I mean, if Councilman Smearle wants to read the responses that, that he had gotten to the questions, do you want to read what, what you have, or?
Read all of the questions that I submitted to the city? I can.
Okay.
The first question to the, to the city was the, the ordinance say, says came through with three members and council recommended five. And the answer back was to make a motion to, there we go, to change the ordinance to, to five, and, and the administration hadn't, didn't care about.
They were fine with that.
They were fine with that one. And then my second question was, will council appoint the members? I am still trying to find all of the answers that we've received.
I believe the answer is council has the ability to make recommendations to the administration, who would then send the recommendations to us to approve. Council is responsible for approving all the members of this board.
Well, yeah, we are. That's just formality, but the question...
No, it's not. We could vote it down if we don't want one.
I know, but normally it's a formality. Let's be realistic. The question posed is, are we going to appoint the members? Not are we going to approve the appointment of the members coming from administration? That was my understanding. And Mr. Schuster made a great point. Any new authority or board we create, this wasn't created by us. This ended up today here. Okay, so we had ample time supposedly, or we had no discussion. I didn't realize I was making a motion to bring it back. I didn't see that. That wasn't discussed. I'm not against this.
No, but this has followed the typical procedure. The administration made a recommendation to begin this advisory council, and it's brought before this board. The board decides, the city council decides to introduce it, and then there's three readings before it actually happens, which gives us the opportunity to ask questions, get some input, and then ultimately vote on it. And then any members that are appointed to the board have to come back to council, and then we have to vote on them as well. I believe the question was asked if council members can make recommendations to the administration to send up the serve on the board, and I believe the answer is yes.
On the question, this is also being placed in sixth order, right? So final vote is going to be taking place next week?
I don't plan on voting to move this anywhere until we five have sat down and talked about it. Council is the board that has the power to create this body. And until we sit down and we talk about it, I understand it got sent down from the administration. We've asked our questions. That's all well and good, but we're the, we're the body.
Well, did anyone on this council, Mr. Schuster, with all due respect, did anyone in this council come up with the idea of developing an environmental advisory council?
No.
I think the answer is no. So the administration came up with that idea, sent it forward to us. I think most of us agreed that it's probably a good idea. It's a non-paying board of which we would have the opportunity to make recommendations to the administration of who would serve on it. Then furthermore, it goes through three readings, and ultimately, I mean, we can make recommendations, but if we're not happy with who's recommended, we can vote them down. We've done that in the past, actually. Or we... Is there anything further on the question?
Yeah, on the question, do, I mean, do we want council to be personally reviewing all the applications that come in for the council? Is that what's being suggested? I don't, I just, I don't understand, because it, just like any other appointments to, to advisory councils, we would, that would come through council, and then we'd have the option of, you know, approving or declining the person who was appointed to us.
We appoint zoning. We don't.
I'm not disputing that.
I think we should have at least something, something at the table besides just recommending people that probably won't get even looked at. I hate to say that, but, I don't know. I just, you know, I know it was tabled, and all of a sudden I had to read it tonight. I apologize, maybe we didn't take a better look at this, because I was really concerned about the other meetings and the hearing tonight, but I don't know. I, I'm not against it. I hope you understand, I'm not against this, but I want it to be done right. A lot of these, a lot of these things that come down to us aren't done right, or they're done late for reappointing somebody and then choosing someone over us when we had thirty, they had thirty days to... So like, I want to get this right. So I want another week. If we get another week, I'll, I'll move it, but I want to take a deeper dive at this and look at this.
So there's been a motion made to table, and it's been seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
This roll call is just to take it from the table.
Right, you, you made a motion to not reintroduce it.
Okay.
And to keep it tabled.
So are, which, which motion are we going on?
So Mr. Schuster made a motion to keep, to keep this amendment, or to keep this ordinance tabled, and it was seconded by Mr. McCandrew.
Okay, okay.
So we're voting on whether to keep it tabled or to introduce it.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Smearle?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Just to clarify, this is a motion to keep it tabled?
Right.
Then yes, to keep it tabled.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McCandrew?
I know I second this. I'll vote yes. I mean, I'll vote no to keep it tabled, but we need a discussion. Just because you got answers, didn't we, we all discussed it? I didn't even see the answers. And I'm thrilled you got them, and, and I hope you're satisfied with them, but I agree, Mr. Schuster, we're the body that is going to have to finally approve this and in some fashion approve the people or disapprove. Are we comfortable with all the answers? We didn't have that discussion. I think we should have. So I'll move, I'll, I'll keep, we move it from the table and move it for one more week, but in that week's time, I think we have to have a conversation if, if we're okay with it. That was never brought up.
So is your vote no?
I voted no to...
If you, if you vote it yes?
I just said I voted no. So I'm voting no.
Okay.
To not move it off the table only, so it, it can move one more week, but if I'm not happy in a week, I'll, you know. We need some discussion with this.
No.
Okay. Mr. King, no? Okay. Okay.
So the motion dies four to one. Now, that puts us back to actually voting to the motion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smearle?
Well, actually, actually, we actually did have the motion, and it was seconded. So I guess I should say on the, on the motion. If there's no, nothing on the motion, then we can vote on putting it back on the table into sixth order. Roll call, please.
Let's just all vote in favor.
Mr. Smearle?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Doc, Mr. King?
Yes.
So moved. The ayes have it, and so moved. Please dispense with the minutes.
Third order, 3A, Minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, regular meeting minutes held March 1st, 2023. 3B, Minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, special meeting minutes held March 1st, 2023. 3C, Open Gov, March 2023 Report for Licenses and Permits. 3D, Correspondence Received from OECD Regarding Cumulative Licenses and Permits Report for January Through March 2023, Received April 11th, 2023. 3E, Minutes of the Shade Tree Commission Quarterly Meeting Held December 7th, 2022. 3F, Minutes of the Historic Architectural Review Board Held March 9th, 2022. 3G, Correspondence Received April 11th, 2023, From OECD Regarding Code Enforcement Report.
Any comments on third order items? If not received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time? Hearing none.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Karen Sexton?
She's, she's from the Griswells, probably.
Okay. Joan Hoda-Wanis?
Can I make a suggestion that you close that window? Kind of a breezy thing coming in.
That's fine. Most of the people are down, so it was getting kind of stuffy in here.
Okay. Do we have a date for a caucus on the 2021 audit?
We do not, at this time.
And has the mayor made a decision on the 10% penalty?
I have not. I didn't have my meeting with her. She was away.
I know. She was busy in Ireland. Why haven't we seen legislation for the new auditor?
I believe that's going to be sent up shortly, probably the next week, I'm thinking.
They got to get going on it, because they promised to have an audit by the end of August. Oh, and when are we going to see the DPW contract posted on the website? You know, the one that was approved seven months ago?
I have an answer for you on that. We'll look into that.
Okay. I saw in the paper that the city paid the school district $2.26 million after that tax mix-up. What I would like to know in fifth order is what budget transfer or financial transaction was enacted to make that check payable to the school district? $2.26 million is a lot more than the contingency fund. So if you don't know, please make sure you have the answer for next week.
I believe it's 2.26 million. We will check on that.
Okay. And also in the paper was a story about the firefighters' arbitration award for their union, which was also on the city's website under the labor agreements. It's an, it's a file that's dated April 5th, I believe. And it was very interesting. If you saw, you know, that the 138 firefighters, they're going to be getting a $2,000 lump sum payment for 2022 and a 2% wage increase for 2023. And of course, the police arbitration should be finalized in the next few weeks. But what I found really interesting and irritating at the same time was a comment made by Larry West, who said that they factored in a potential wage increase when they did the 2023 budget. And that didn't ring true, so I went and pulled the budget. Now, for the firefighters, 138 people, most of the line items, the salary items are flat, with one exception, that was for the 69 privates. They got a 3.25% pay increase. The other 69 people got zilch, okay? And then I went and looked at the police department, and I got to tell you, the police department union members got screwed royally, because they have 142 members that are in the union. And there are, back in 2022, there were 89 regular patrolmen who got paid a certain amount. But that number jumped up to 93 patrolmen, and they got paid a certain amount, and then it increased, or at least the total figure did. But when you did the math and divided one figure by 89 and the second figure by 93, well, guess what? Their pay went down $1,187 per patrolman. That's called getting screwed. So I would like to know from Mr. West, hopefully you can get an answer from me next week, how does this reflect that he factored in a potential wage increase because of these union contracts? Doesn't look like it to me. And I want to know where all this money is coming from, because I suspect the police are going to get the same deal that the firefighters got, $2,000 lump sum payment, 2% wage increase, and those legal fees, ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching. Where's that money coming from? Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Fay Ferranas?
Council, I'd like to ask you, as an investigative body, if you would please look into something for me. Three people have contacted me already and inquired about this, but I have no way of knowing, but it may be a rumor, but it may be very true. And I'd like to explain this to you, so you could look into it. At 1420 Milered Avenue, right by the Lace Works, around March 9th, there was a raid by the Pennsylvania State Police and the Scranton Police. And what they found was...
When did that occur, Fay?
March 9th, I believe.
March 9th.
1420 Milered, next to their Lace Works. And what they found was a biker gang that was renting there. And the charges supposedly are drugs, guns, chicken fighting, and prostitution. And I have the deed right here from the Lockwana County Assessor's Office. The city of Scranton owns that property, where this biker gang rented since 2018. So if you could please check into that, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Volberg, will you please check into that for us?
I will, Mr. King.
The Scranton Times have not said anything about it, and I wish they would investigate that. And Channel 16, nobody seems to know anything about it. But I think the people in Scranton need to know if that's true, because the state police are there. Okay, now, another thing. You know how I've been going after the recyclables from the DPW, picking up all the recyclables in the businesses, the bars and the restaurants and the BFWs? Well, as it turns out, and I have the city code right here, here's the city code. It states that Cecilia Monroe, the recycling coordinator supervisor, she is the person who is supposed to send forms out to every business. They're supposed to turn them in to her, with affidavits notarized, saying that they have a private hauler. Now, that's something they must do every year. They have to put, and they also have to show the tonnage that they, they have, the weight when the recyclables go to the recycling center. Well, I would like to know, all the businesses that do not have a form filled out, I think there are many, many, many that don't have a form filled out, saying that they have a private hauler. So if that's the case, we could only assume that the DPW still might be picking up the recyclables there for free, like they have for the last seven years, without paying a garbage fee and without paying a tonnage fee that we are paying for the taxpayers, $40 a ton. And you know the bars have cans and cans, 20 cans every other week, $40 a ton that the taxpayers are paying, and they're getting away scot-free. Another thing. Mr. Smearle, remember when you asked Mr. Volenberg to check into Railroad Avenue, all the holes at the utility companies? Were you aware that DPW went and filled those potholes, not the utilities?
No, I was not aware of that.
Well, that is what happened, because I was there. DPW did that work, not the water company. So that's a use of our time, our equipment, our blacktop equipment. It's not right. And Mr. Schuster, you asked two weeks ago, how do we get $191,000 for the first three months of the year in overtime? There's been maybe two snowstorms all in, from December till now. How do you justify, did you find out the reason why there was 191,000? You didn't even ask last week to get the answer. You didn't follow up. How could anybody explain, Mr. Smearle, somebody up there explain how $191,000 was spent on overtime for the first three months when there's no storms? And there's no reasons for the overtime. Now, I asked you, Mr. King, to have the director of DPW come in and Chris Smith, the supervisor of the refuse. You said that the mayor has to give that permission. No, she does not. You're the, the city code says you are the legislative branch, you are the oversight, you are the ones that have the right to bring them, and you could even subpoena them. So it's not up to the mayor. That's just a cop-out. It is up to you. You could go over there and say, would you please come in? If they don't want to come in, fine, just let us know. But in the meantime, you're complicit. All of you are complicit as a part of helping them get overtime with no accountability and no verifiable overtime. So I would wish that you would contact Mr., the director again, Mr. Petroface, and Chris Smith. Who, Chris Smith, by the way, told me that Cecilia Monroe has nothing to do with getting the contract signed from the businesses, to show that they have a private hauler. Well, he is wrong. So I think he needs to learn what his job is as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fay Ferranas. Brian Reap?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Petroface and Mr. Smith are working to get Rubicon in here for the following Tuesday after, after April 18th, one of the two following Tuesdays.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll firm it up.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, council. Brian Reap, resident, East Mountain, Scranton, Pennsylvania. It's kind of a homecoming in some way. I haven't been in this room in 22 years, but 26 years ago, I sat on that same dais as a member of the Planning Commission, and at that time, we had just passed what was called the Master Plan for the City of Scranton, an endeavor that cost the taxpayers about three-quarters of a million dollars, but it was to be the bible for all planning from that day forward in the City of Scranton. Someone asked me to look into the issue or the concern of the Geisinger development in the Hill section. They knew I was a planner at one point, they knew I was a councilman at another point. And I went back to my Planning Commission mentor, a gentleman by the name of Pete Nodle, who was our chair back in 1997, who I tapped into him as a resource concerning this matter. And back then, right after the Master Plan was passed, there were some stipulations that were stated in the Master Plan that in residential zones, such as the one that we're talking about, and I'll make reference to what Peter Nodle said at that time, residential areas are the first consideration in the Master Plan for the City of Scranton. The first consideration in zoning is to protect residential property values. That was when neighborhoods in 1997 were like the king of our town. Neighborhood movement was big, neighborhoods were protected, neighborhood had voices as to how they were living out their lives. This is a major decision that not only reflects, obviously, you know, the, the neighborhood, of course, the institution, and at the end, the quality of healthcare for, for each and every one of us. I understand that discussions between the neighborhood and with the Geisinger, and obviously with your body, has led us to a position that a compromise can't be reached. Am I, been told the right information? No compromise has been discussed on this plan? Or if there was, there's been no cooperation by Geisinger?
Well, we had Geisinger come in here tonight, Mr. Reap, and we heard from the citizens, and we heard from Geisinger, so I believe that there's some questions that members of this body have now to go back to Geisinger with prior to voting for this.
And then one of the, the biggest concerns I heard is the, the height of the proposed structure being at 100 feet, where I was visually in the area three times to look at this. Right now, I think the highest point of the existing Geisinger building is somewhere around 50 feet. So you're talking about double the height of what you see on the skyline of Geisinger. So if I'm a resident on, on the side of Kovacs facing that, there's a good chance that I'm not going to see sunlight on any given morning. So now it comes down to a question, are the residents going to ever see sunlight like they've seen sunlight? Something as simple, maybe something that we take for granted, but you know, it's a consideration, because now their neighborhood is completely changed and will change, obviously, for, for eternity. But do we still follow the Master Plan in our, in our zoning and our Planning Commission? Do we still follow that? Do you know? The Master Plan, is it still a document that's in play that we use for planning purposes? Because back then, neighborhoods were king in the Master Plan that I knew back in 1997. Because certainly, I don't see where the consideration, well, I, I see you're trying to lead towards consideration of the residents, but clearly, I mean, if, if both the residents and the institution are going to coexist in that part of our city, there certainly has to be some compromise, so that both parties and both interests have been, you know, obviously covered. So I just question about whatever happened to all that money we spent 26 years ago creating this Master Plan, which was supposed to be the bible of our plant community called Scranton? Whatever happened to that? And is it still being followed? That's all, because I was part of it 26 years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Reap.
Thank you.
Evening, council. Bob Ruther, East Mountain, resident taxpayer. You know, I got a few calls within the last few days that people told me, don't bother showing up at city council. It's a waste of your time. It's politics, and you're not going to win. So I really considered not coming here tonight, but then I started thinking, of all the hard work my wife and I did to purchase land on East Mountain, build a home for our family, and I couldn't sit back and let this just be pushed through. So a good place to start would be, can anybody on council explain why the single-family zoning on East Mountain that's been there for decades is being changed?
I believe it's R7 suburban, single residential, excuse me, R6.
R6.
Excuse me.
R6.
It's the most restrictive in the city.
So you're aware of what that contains?
I know that there's special exceptions listed in there. I know that there's special exceptions listed in there, like such things as apartments or townhouses. They would require having to go before zoning for exceptions. Presently, we, presently, we have townhouses and apartments on East Mountain, Oakmont Apartments, the apartments up by Temple.
That's zoned differently.
Okay.
That's zoned differently.
So, the new zoning, it's listed under special exceptions, so that if someone wanted to do an apartment or townhouse, it would be required to go through planning, zoning, and follow that process.
Anybody else have an answer to that? So, let's call it what it really is. It's upzoning. Does anybody know on Council what upzoning is? Nobody? You guys are going to vote on this in seven, in seven days, and you don't know what you're voting on? I just happen to have the definition of upzoning right here. And upzoning is the changing of single-family zoning codes to allow for taller and denser housing, like duplexes, accessory dwellings, ADUs, and townhouses, also known as garden You guys know about that?
There's already duplexes on East Mountain.
When were they approved?
Was one, I know for a fact, an individual that grew up in a duplex on East Mountain Road.
How long ago was that, Mr. King?
Oh, I can't say the exact time. It's been a while.
Well, I have the amendment, or the zoning from nineteen ninety-three, and it wasn't allowed. Duplex weren't allowed. So, I think this whole issue of zoning, eliminating R one zoning, single-family zoning, is probably an ideology of the mayor and the city. Can anybody up there tell me if the city's going to get any money from changing the zoning laws from the federal government? Can anybody go on the record and say that?
We're not aware of that, or it was never presented to us.
I'm sorry?
We're not aware of that, or it was never presented to us.
Well, that's what.
If you have information, please share, like.
Sure, that, that's in the infrastructure plan. That's in Biden's infrastructure plan. He's going to allow grants and tax breaks to any city that changes their zoning laws. Nobody is aware of that?
I mean, we're doing this as a regional authority, like throughout the county with other municipalities, so I'm, yeah, I'm not aware of that. We're reaping any benefit from, from updating our zoning ordinance.
All right. Five minutes isn't enough, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruther. Lee Morgan?
Lee Morgan, one more time. What I'd like to say is that the zoning really needs to be explained to the residents, like I said prior to this meeting. Now, I'm the person who pulled the SAPA out of the garbage, and Mr. McGlaughlin and myself debated it for a council race, and it was a dead agenda. I understand SAPA. I've got it at home, the whole, the whole thing. I think we got a lot of problems here, and I think that Dr. Rothschild brought it completely into view, and Mr. McAndrew to a point, because you're saying you don't have any knowledge. So, how can we vote on something as an informed body without a thorough and complete understanding of the legislation and the law that you're going to create here and the effects of that law on all the residents in the city? And what is in the pipeline? What kind of money are we trying to bring into the city? Who's, who's sharing all this information with you? Because if you're just voting on things with no knowledge, then you're, you're helping to destroy the very fabric of this city by, by being an uninformed legislative branch passing laws without knowledge. It's a very, very, very troubling thing, and it shouldn't take place here. That vote shouldn't take place next week. There should be a map created here, and the five council members should, should explain to the residents this city, the zoning changes and what it means for every resident, because they're all, they're all shareholders here. They're property owners. It's their major investment is their home and their families. Don't forget what I said about what happened on the Hill when I was, when I was a kid and what the University of Scranton did. And when you look at what's taken place there, it may take twenty years for it to happen, but the destruction you will cause in this city will be mind-boggling. And, and look at, not saying you don't know is not a satisfactory answer. And the other thing I have here is, you know, the mayor was in Ireland this week, so I didn't get it, and next week, I've taken a couple of days off, because I'm going to call the mayor. I asked her to reintroduce legislation to this council to recreate the public access component of ECTV. And I'm going to ask the five council members to also communicate with the mayor about bringing that agenda forward for, in the next council meeting, because that legislation needs to come up from the mayor. Now, you know, people can file anything they want in court. There's not a doubt in my mind that I won't prevail. Not the slightest doubt that I won't prevail is in my mind, okay? But I want the people to have, to get into their head whether the mayor and this council actually work for the public, because I can't see why we would stifle the right of a free people to have access to a public access channel that funds this city to the point of one-point-five million dollars, and the only people we want to shut out is the average citizen and any comments they may make. And when you read the legislation, the Congress and the Senate created that peg channel, that was the whole purpose of it all. And when you look at the government that's having meetings and presenting things, just look at what's happened here today. You've acknowledged that you have no knowledge of something that's taking place, but yet, you're on ECTV and you're presenting things as a body representing the residents, but you have no facts. And if people had the ability to come forward with their facts on ECTV, what would that change for this city? What change would that drive in this city? Not to cause ruffled feathers, but to inform the electorate on, maybe we're going the wrong way, and maybe the Hill wouldn't be all ripped up like it is now. Maybe we could actually do some things and, and start a real conversation on where to go. And look at, maybe some people would be on ECTV, I don't know, doing graduations from high school. Maybe they'd be talking about making recipes at home, because that's what it was about. But, you know, I think what the Congress and Senate wanted to do is inject the public into the politics, their local communities, to make changes that enhance the life of the residents, and that's what we need in Scranton. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. David Colley? That exhaust list, is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Tom Poyn, Maduka, stepping up for a second run. It's interesting with this, since I have some extra time, since I already had five minutes. Touching on the zoning again, it's interesting that if I went into the zoning office and I walked in with a proposal to have my land rezoned, and I said, this is what I want for my zoning, but I have no plan, I have no documents, I've done no research, I've done no water layoff, I've done nothing on parking, it's, it's all in my head, will you give me the zoning variance that I require? I would be laughed out of the zoning board. Plain and simple, without all of that documentation going into the zoning board for variance, you can't get those changes. They look at you and say you're deficient, yet this body wants to accept a hospital who comes forward and says the same exact thing. I have absolutely nothing to show you. Give me the change without anything to show. That way, when I won't have to go to the zoning board and show them something before I build. That's, the forty, the sixty, the sixty-foot difference is the difference between them having to go before the zoning board and showing cause. I, Dr. Rothschild mentioned and asked, how many doctors and staff were up there on call on a shift that was danced around, it was avoided, it was ignored? What I wish that was asked was, how many doctors does the emergency room have, not on call, but physically in the ER, seeing and triaging people on every shift? And as a matter of, to clarify, not student doctors who can look at it but cannot actually prescribe or do anything, they can look at it and then have another doctor who's certified come in there afterwards. A lot of facilities use student doctors who come in there, do the initial work, and then have a doctor float in the room and float out after giving his blessing. Unfortunately, they skipped how many physicians they have physically on duty. I know a number is hard to come up with because they don't like numbers. They wanted to build back at North Scranton Expressway and Providence Road, back behind the sheets. They wanted it extended to a civic zone back there. I think that is the perfect place that should have been that wasn't, because it would allow a facility there to grow up behind a gas station, in a nook, behind a highway with quick and easy access that could be used for dialysis and all sorts of other businesses. It would take the impact out of the Naug Park and move it over next to the school on the opposite side of the highway. There's limited impact there. I don't see why that isn't being proposed. Emergency services can be left up there, fine, but that hospital just isn't emergency Now, to move on with the Environmental Advisory Council we started off this argument with. My concern in that is in Section eighteen thirty-six B. It says, "The mayor may appoint with the advice of council up to two alternate members." Note the wording of that. You get to choose, per the wording on that, two alternate members. It doesn't say that this body gets to choose any members at all. It specifically says in there, you get to choose alternates. By the reading of the law and the reading of the word of it, she gets to appoint everyone on staff on there, because it specifically directs in this law by the verbiage that this body gets to approve alternates only. That needs to be corrected and edited. It's wrong, and it's a nice slip-through that would allow this body to be completely removed from the process. I have a problem about commissions anyway at this point, when we're looking at all of the legal fees coming down, because every commission does have fees to operate, legal fees, paperwork, even if they're small, but we have a ton coming down in the budget at this point that needs to be looked at before feel-good commissions. Whether valid or not, there are more pressing things on the table that are of financial trouble to this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poyn. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Council, Dave Rinaldi, Kovacs Avenue. I just want to make a couple of comments on some of the information that was provided by people who testified on behalf of Geisinger. We had one trauma physician who, and he was the second one who testified, and he talked about a shooting in West Side. Well, we never heard about the murder right in front of their front entrance at Three West Olive. I mean, this is what happens when you don't have a neighborhood. These kind of things, crime increases, things like that. So, that's one point I wanted to make. The other thing that he said specifically was that the population was increasing. Now, I read to council at the last council meeting or the one before, from their own study, their most recent study, that said the population was declining, said births were declining, yet they're telling you, we need this. We need this. You know, I, I, I don't know whether, whether doctors live in a bubble or what. I know lawyers do, but I could speak for that. But, I mean, I, I just don't know what they're even talking about. And then that brings me to the dean. Well, we have assurances of doctors. Well, we have assurances of doctors because they restrict the number of people who could go to medical school. It's a closed society. That's why they make a million dollars. And I don't think that they understand at all the impact it has on people who live there. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rinaldi.
Joe Medd, Scranton, resident, vice president, Tripp Park Civic Association, executive director of the Bull's Head Weston Field Neighborhood Association. I come here again tonight to ask you, if you don't get the answers from CNC that you asked, that you leave that item on the table, don't bring it off the table if they're not going to provide you the answers. Otherwise, we know what's going to happen. There'll be an amendment, reduce the height, it'll fail. The zoning will get approved, three to two. The people, they don't get anything. They lose. Again, neighborhoods as part of the Master Plan, neighborhoods built this city. Years ago, there was thirteen neighborhood associations in the city. I don't know how many are left. I know there's Green Ridge, there's North Scranton, there's Bull's Head, there's Tripp Park, the West Side High Park, that's on and off. You know, we've got Oakmont Neighborhood Association, we've got East Mountain Residents Association, South Scranton Residents Association, the Dutch Hollow Group. There's, there's a number of them, but not as active as they were before, when they used to have neighborhood council meetings. You know, every president or representative from those neighborhoods got together around the table, either here or next door, to discuss the issues. Bring them in here as a collective voice to get things done. I don't see that happening now, where this council, not all of the members of this council are listening to the people of this city. So, I ask you again to leave it on the table if you don't get the answers, and if you don't have it in your heart that it's for the people, vote no. Or accept the amendment, lower the height, vote yes, let them come back. As Attorney Sakidi said, it's going to take years if that happens. So be it. We'll still be able to get our service in the hospital if we get sick. Not there, down the road, hate to say, leave the city, but go to Dixon. You know, you need small, quick emergency, Lehigh Valley is right up the road there. You know, they can stitch you up if you get bit by a dog, or you break your leg, they can put a cast on. You know, there's plenty of places that we can go. We don't need all this expansion if it's going to impact the neighborhoods. And on the second item that you discussed in the beginning of this meeting, by bringing the Environmental Advisory Council off of the table, moving it to Sixth Order. If, in Sixth Order, you do not have any motions to make those changes that were recommended here tonight or mentioned here tonight in regard to the alternates, and if Councilman Smearle says that it's going to go from three to five in the mayor's agreement, if that mayor appoints with the advice and consent of council, and five members on this council say no, if it's with the advice and consent of council, you maybe want to ask your solicitor to take a look at that, look at past practices in prior administrations. If council says no, and that person is appointed by the mayor to one of these commissions or board with the exception of zoning, in which you have authorization, that person can sit at that meeting. I know it for a fact. I've known two boards, I know two people. I know one of those people who sat at that board. He's standing right here in front of you. I was turned down by City Council. I was appointed to the Scranton Parking Authority. I sat there for many years as a member and as a chairman. Council said no. Council said no. The solicitor for the parking authority said that Mr. Madyevich was appointed by the mayor. He is duly entitled to that seat. So if you don't, if you don't go through and look at that legislation and have a three-two, you know, where council gets to appoint, the mayor gets to appoint, you split an alternate, you will be in trouble with her appointing or the future mayor appointing, and this council has no say on that appointment. So I ask you to consider that, I ask you to consider the vote, and I ask you to remember the people because the people are what makes this city. And without the people here, we don't have a city, we don't have a neighborhood, and we need that because in today's world, if we're not together, we don't have anything. And thank you for your time, and I ask you to reconsider, you know, those amendments that were placed here to lower that height. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madyevich. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Good evening, counsel. Virgil Argenta, AKA Victor Arnetta. I'm here tonight in regards to some public health issues regarding the homeless camps. Well, first of all, the lack of running water, no toilets, makes definitely an unsanitary living environment. Here's Geisinger's chance to step up to the plate and check and see how many children are living in those homeless camps, how many sick individuals are in need of care. I had open-heart surgery, triple bypass. It was no joy coming home. I needed somebody to take care of me. How many people are in these camps that we don't know about? The spread of disease and bacteria, the attack of vermins and rats. If we don't clean this up now, we may find ourselves in the middle of something more serious, a health epidemic. These camps can be very hazardous to the residents. Most frequent diseases are due to the unhygienic conditions, TB, HIV/AIDS, Hep C, which spread very quickly. The doctor can attest to that. Bloodborne pathogens, there are large amounts of trash left behind, aren't just everyday household items. Leaving these materials unattended can result in tremendous risk to both the homeless population and the people living nearby. They create a negative impact on the environment, they're threats to businesses, there's high criminal activity in the area. Did anybody take their grandchildren, their children, or just their wives or significant others for a walk on that trail? Come back, let me know how you think. Guaranteed you won't go back unless you're locked and loaded. Check the pavilion on Olive Street. See if you'd want to sit there and have a drink and a hoagie from Catalano's or Nicky's. Guaranteed you won't. There are few, there are few of these homeless camps with propane tanks. Does anybody find that an issue? When it's cold out, we have cold blue. We take over Weston Field. When it's, when it's hot weather advisories and it's hot, do we have a cold red? We were on a fire watch list back week, last week. Did anyone check the area and the surroundings to make sure none of these vinyl and nylon tents weren't in a fire zone for hazardous conditions? These guys are human lives too. Think about that. Thank you for your time. I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Argento. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Fifth order, five A motions.
Mr. Schmurl, do you have any motions or comments?
A few, a few comments. I visited the DPW last week with, with a few questions. First was about Rubicon, and I asked about when they were going to implement or what was going on with it. And I was advised that they had a two-year window to complete a route, and they are nearing that completion now, is what I was told. They should be up and running by mid-May, and then they will start doing their test runs in different areas of the city. It won't be implemented all at once because of, I guess, too much confusion. And at this time, when they start doing that, they don't plan on making any changes to the pickup day schedule. Everything should stay the same for now. I also went to the 1300 block of Prospect Avenue where I saw a bunch of city equipment there, and it turned out they, they were replacing 120 feet of underground drainage line because the other utilities could not complete their projects over there until that was done. That was a stormwater drain that was under there. And the Monroe Avenue, the gentleman that was here from Monroe Avenue, I went and looked at, at that road.
Mr. Rains.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Rains?
Yes. Yeah, I, I went and looked at it, I believe last Thursday night, we were going by there, and I got out and looked at it. It seems both ends of the street are higher, and, and all the mud and stuff seems to go down to, to the right of his driveway. So I, I did ask Director Petroface, you know, what are we going to do about it? He advised me, they have a plate grinder or a plate something. They're going to go down and, I guess, core the macadam and see how deep it is, and then recommend how far down the street should be taken, milled down, before it actually is paved. It is on the paving list, I saw it on the list they had down there for the fall. And I asked while he was there with that equipment if he would maybe take a skid steer down and run both sides of the street because whoever the contractor was, all of the mud and stuff is all over the street. And I asked if he would scrape that all down and then, you know, do one side one night, no parking, and then, you know, take care of the mud and stuff, and run the street sweeper there a few times and get that cleaned, and then the other, the following night to, to do the other side of the street. And they said they would take care of that this week. So I, I called on Monday, and they said they were still on schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Schmurl. Mr. Schuster?
Yes, I have two items tonight. One was discussed in, in public comment. Two weeks ago, I, I asked Mr. Boldenberg to reach out to the Scranton Police Department or any other members of the administration about the homeless camps that were, were visible along the expressway. I do know that there's others. I, I didn't see that we got any information back on that. I do know that in the fall, when I mentioned it, the police were, were out there within two hours of our meeting. So can we just follow up on that? It seems that those camps have grown in the last two weeks.
I'll follow up with them, sir.
Thank you. And I did get an address to be sent to Code Enforcement, 305-307 of Putnam Street in North Scranton. If we could also send that over to Code Enforcement.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild?
No, I have no motions or comments at this time. Thank you.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yeah, so last night, I was at the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association, and a resident had a concern. So she, she saw, not in Scranton, but very close, at the Forest Hill Cemetery on the other side, I guess, of the School of the Death. Big equipment, big piping. She was wondering if that's the start or part of the Meadow, Meadowbrook project that, you know, we haven't been updated on. So I told her I'd, I'd look into it for her. So, Mr. Boldenberg, would you please either reach out to, you know, Mr. King, or not, not this one, Don King, or administration, just to see if this is the start of it and we're jumping in, or where are we at with that?
I'll reach out to all parties.
Okay, and then I do remember, maybe two years ago, there was a problem with, with some of the homeless camps that Mr. Argento just brought up. I remember it was a huge issue on Olive Street, the trail, with that big pavilion where there was a lot of needles and a lot of, you know, some unsanitary stuff, so, and starting around this time of the year. And I, I know that there's, there's a process for that, and, and that was cleaned up, and, and so maybe we have to take a look at these different areas so they don't get out of control, and, and, and God love them, you know, we, we, we want to try to help them, but I think we need to take another look at that. If you would please do that, or remind the people that do.
I will, sir.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. Having said that, I had the opportunity on Sunday morning to join Mr. Schmurl and Dr. Rothschild and several other individuals who help out up at the Naug Park and the Rec Authority to do a cleanup on the hill there on, I guess that would be still considered South Main Avenue, right? Coming up the hill from the expressway?
It is north main.
Yeah, it's, it's north main, right? Okay. So, yeah, I guess it's north main there, but, and I was just impressed with the, like, I, I know that these individuals that helped out and did tremendous amount of time and work, it was, it was amazing, the cleanup that was done and the, the grass cutting and, actually, I picked up a needle myself with, you know, fortunately I had a grabber. But to your point about the, you know, the homeless, you know, by going down there, cutting all those weeds and picking up all that garbage and cleaning up that area and kind of opening it up a little bit more, it, it, it kind of helps to open up the area so that it would lend itself to make them more visible, which would then prevent, I think, from things like that happening. So, and I, I just want to thank everyone for helping out, and I know that's going to continue. We're going to try to bounce around the city and do some more cleanup throughout the city, and it was nice to help out. I have some follow-up for some, some members or some of the citizens that have come up. Doris Kalowski, a request was sent Thursday, April 13th, to the attention of Colts Management to review for passenger bench, for enclosed bench area for the comfort and safety of the riders. Colts has the update under review and will advise council on next steps. Thank you. Marie Schumacher regarding the entry-level police exam. The mayor requested the test in August of 2022. The language in these minutes regarding approval for the mayor's office was in regards to finalizing paperwork with the online testing company that will be handling the written part of the exam, National Testing Network, which is being reviewed by the city solicitor. The commission subsequently received confirmation the paperwork has been submitted and therefore published a notice of entry exam. The online enrollment begins with National Testing Network on April 19. Ken Norton, a request was sent to Don King, city planner, as follow-up regarding identifying double poles and any responsible utility. The initial group study included West and North Scranton. Code Enforcement to visit Kaiser Valley Community Center lot in addition to the adjacent, adjacent lot for cleanup. I know there was some major puddling that occurs over there. Derek Rains, council sent the request to Tom Alessi and Larry West to revisit council request to handicap parking spot in addition to update at line painting and handicap drop-off at the rear of City Hall. A request was sent to DPW to add Kierst Court, particularly between Kane Street and Wall Street. DPW Director Scott Petrofis confirmed DPW will do pothole patching this week and place it on the 2023 paving list. Rolls Court, Scranton Police to review neighbors' claims related to parking issues in Rolls Court near West Scranton Middle School during student drop-off and pickup times, in addition to requests for no parking signs in Rolls Court. Received an email from a resident regarding a vulgar political sign at 2130 Jackson Street in the corner of Jackson and North Sherman Street. Sign is presently under investigation by the Scranton Police. That's all I have.
Five B for an introduction to resolution. Amending Resolution Number 194-2023 entitled, "Approving intermunicipal transfer of an eating place liquor license E2760, currently owned by Salt Core Inc. and located at 622 South Blakely Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18512, to Green Ridge News LLC, located at 329 Green Ridge Streets, Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18509, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board to change the address of Salt Core Inc. to read 620 South Blakely Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18512."
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for an induction to resolution. Ratifying and approving the city's acceptance and administration of grant funds from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for up to $500,000 to be used for Scranton LTILP for the project to be named the Leonard Theater Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm, I'm excited to, to see this request because I, I've enjoyed the Leonard Theater before. I've been in there for, for different events, and it's beautiful. I'd love to see it renovated and revitalized and, and put to, put to use. So I'll be in support of this.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for an induction to resolution. Authorizing any and all appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a traffic signal maintenance agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question. All, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, six A, previously tabled, file to council number 53-2023, establishing an environmental advisory council for the city of Scranton.
I make a motion to amend file of council number 553-2023 as follows. Section 18-63A governing provisions is amended to read, "The EAC shall consist of five members appointed by the mayor with the advice and consent of city council."
Second.
On the question.
So on the question, like I said, I'll move this, but I, I might not move it any farther than next week. Let's take a, let's take a deeper dive. Some, even some of the residents brought up some good points that maybe we, we should take a look at with regards to the alternates. Like I said earlier, you know, we got, I'm, I'm a man of policy and principle, let's get this right. So with that said, I'll move it, but maybe not any further than next week.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Want to oppose? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, seven A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, Resolution Number 219-2023. Ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton in partnership with the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for up to $300,000 to be used for the engineering and design of the pedestrian bridge over the Lackawanna River at the former Scranton Streets corridor.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, Resolution Number 220-2023. Ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Trust for Public Lands on Common Ground Program for up to $24,000 to be used for the infrastructure to support programming at Connors Orchard Street Park.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of Item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 221-2023. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Bay Hill Environmental Services to perform lead inspections and risk assessments.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schmurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. I hereby declare Item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order. Eight A, file to council number 53-2023.
This ordinance was taken off the table and placed in Sixth Order and will be in Seventh Order next week for final vote.
Eight B, file to council number 54-2023.
This is the zoning ordinance and has been tabled as required by Lackawanna County Planning Commission. It will be brought back from the table and placed in Seventh Order for vote after a public hearing was held this evening, April 18. public hearing was held this evening, April 18, 2023. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.